Okay, it being seven o'clock, we'll call to order the Monday, August 11th, 2025, meeting of the Somersworth City Council. Uh, city clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councillor Peppin?
Yep.
Councillor Vincent?
Here.
Gibson?
He's excused.
Parity Catanzaro?
Here.
Mishu?
Yeah.
Witham?
I'm here.
Goodwin?
Here.
Cameron?
Yeah.
And Barry?
Here.
And I note for the record, Mayor Girding is on vacation, so I'm standing in for you this evening. Uh, Councillor Peppin, if you'd please lead the council and those in attendance in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. That brings us to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the recognition of indigenous people, our native ancestral Americans. Uh, this meeting takes place on Endakina, which is the unceded traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land, waterways, living beings, and the Alnabak, the people who have stewarded Endakina throughout the generations. Brings us to Agenda Item Number Four, which is public hearings. Our first public hearing this evening is on a community development block grant. It's a project update regarding a public facilities grant award from the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority to the YMCA Somersworth. And I do have some procedural matters to read with regard to this. Uh, the public hearing is to consider public comments for an update to the Granite YMCA Somersworth Early Learning Center. For members of the public present tonight, copies of the project update are available if you request them. Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, funds are available to municipalities through the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. Up to $500,000 annually is available on a competitive basis for housing in public facilities, economic development, microenterprises, and emergency activities. Up to $25,000 is available for planning grants. The majority of all beneficiaries must directly benefit individuals and households who earn low and moderate income. Community Development Finance Authority awarded the Granite YMCA Somersworth Early Learning Center project $500,000. These funds will support the renovation of the Somersworth Early Learning Center, which is located at 35 Bartlett Avenue here in Somersworth. These proposed improvements include upgrade to the parking lot, installation of air conditioning, new playground equipment, upgraded classrooms, and other building structural improvements. The project satisfies the national objective of low-to-moderate-income housing, and income verification is proposed to ensure that individuals and households served qualify as low-to-moderate income. The project conforms to Somersworth Housing Authority, Somersworth Housing and Community Development Plan goals of, one, to promote activities that protect the health and safety of residents and visitors, and support new and rehabilitated rehabilitate existing public facilities, including childcare facilities, to enhance the health and well-being of children. These are both short- and long-term goals. At this time, I'd invite any representatives from Granite YMCA to come forward and offer some comment, if you would. And if you would, for the record, please introduce yourself for the record. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Uh, there it is. Okay. Uh, thank you for that. I appreciate it. My name is Blair Haney. I am a principal planner with Stratford Regional Planning Commission, SRPC. Uh, we are located at 150 Wakefield Street in Rochester, New Hampshire. Uh, so I'm going to introduce the project real quick, and then my colleague Ryan here will, uh, from the YMCA, will go over some of the construction status details. Um, the purpose of this hearing is that it's required as part of the grant program. We have to do what they call a mid-project update. Um, just give an opportunity for anybody in the community that want to speak up to it, um, anybody, um, at the council level that wants to ask questions. Um, so we just run through a quick reminder of what the project was, and then um, a little bit of the status update on the construction and, you know, update on the timeline. Uh, but as I mentioned, this is a required, um, public hearing that we have to do as part of the grant program. We did the first one, uh, as part of the application process. Uh, so with that said, uh, the City of Somersworth received funds on behalf of the Granite YMCA. You are considered the grant grantee. They are considered the sub-recipient, um, uh, to support the needed upgrades and improvements to the Somersworth Early Learning Center. The YMCA acquired the facility from the previous owner, and now they own it and operate it. The YMCA planned to renovate the parking lot, landscaping, playgrounds, and upgrade to the HVA system with mini splits, uh, air conditioning units. We did a public uh, bid process. We received one bid, um, and that, uh, gentleman, uh, his firm has been overseeing not only his staff, but then, uh, some subcontractors. So I'm going to let Ryan give you a quick update on that, uh, to let you know where we are, and then I'll finish up. Thanks.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay? Good. Good afternoon. My name is Ryan Gatto. I'm the chief operating officer with the Granite YMCA. Um, just about three years ago, the Granite YMCA and the Somersworth Early Learning Center merged into one entity, and the Granite YMCA took over the operations of the, this location. At the time, it roughly had about thirty, thirty-five kids in its care. And so over the course of the last year, year and a half, we have been slowly renovating this facility with a lot of community support, foundations, donors, uh, and in our own reserves. Uh, this community block grant helped us carry this project to the finish line, as right now, we are in the final steps of this renovation that's taking place. Uh, in April, we held, uh, our pre-construction meeting, uh, and we had notice to proceed starting on April 28th. With that, the major components of the beginning of this project are already, uh, completed as of today. That is the air conditioning inside the, the facility, uh, which happened to, uh, be completed at a perfect timing for us and the kids. Uh, and then the parking lot also has been completed. And while the parking lot doesn't seem to be, uh, always the most extravagant project, uh, this is one that had, you know, uh, potholes the size of craters, and really wasn't quite ADA accessible, and left a lot to be desired for families and kids with strollers. Uh, with these two projects really being completed right now, we're going into the last phase, uh, which we hope to have completed in September and October, which is doing some excavation and landscape work around the facility, which will prep for two brand-new playgrounds, uh, that will go on site. Uh, like I said, about three years ago, when we, uh, acquired and merged with this entity, it was averaging about twenty-five to thirty-five kids in its care. Uh, today, we're averaging right around ninety kids in our care, uh, and are working with the school district, uh, and after-school programs with another hundred kids in two different after-school programs. So funds like this and the resources of the community have allowed us to really kind of take shape, uh, and really quite grow in this, uh, with some opportunities and possibilities of the future. Uh, we're looking at a youth and teen center actually on this side as well, too. Uh, so let me know if you have any other questions as well.
Um, yeah, uh, thank you. I just, I forgot to mention, SRPC's role in this is we are the grant administrator. Again, something required by CDFA. Uh, any grant that is, is awarded, uh, is required to have sort of a third-party grant administrator, and, uh, as RPC, as one of the RPCs in New Hampshire, um, we all, uh, take that role, um, when asked. So that is our role. And then just the last thing I wanted to say is that, uh, the project is currently on budget and on time. Uh, something we rarely get to say, so I feel like I wanted to take the moment to do that. Uh, we're anticipating, uh, completion by December of 2025. It might be a little bit earlier than that, but there will be some closeouts. So I think all told, uh, the project should be done by the end of the calendar year.
Excellent. So at this time, uh, it is a public hearing, so I'd invite any member of the public to come forward and offer any public comment on this grant. Seeing none, although a little bit out of the norm, uh, I would open it up to, without any objection, to council questions for, uh, the folks that are here this evening. Councillor Vincent.
Thank you, uh, Your Honor. And thank you very much for, uh, taking my question. Um, so, uh, are we gonna get, is, is the full amount of 500,000? Is that what it is? Yes?
Yes, that's what's been awarded through the city to the, to, uh, the suburb city.
Now, does this just apply just to the building and grounds, or maybe, you know, like, and I'm not sure what the location looks like, and, uh, are you, are you allowed to use funds to better maybe even outside the grounds? Maybe a sidewalk or so, or is that just prohibited, you know?
Um, I could ask the CDFA. My gut is going to tell me no, mostly because the funds that they have were matched by funds, like outside funds, because they didn't have enough, uh, just through the CDFA grant. So that would require them to go out and get a lot more, and would require us to work on city property. And I just have to, I don't know that we can, uh, we can change the grant that way.
Right, and I don't want to sound like, you know, the greedy counselor that wants something done for the city. I just know that, well, you talked about, you know, uh, accessibility for handicap. I just didn't know if there was any, any improvement outside of that.
Like I said, I can, it was not anticipated. Uh, I'm guessing it's going to stay that way, but I can double-check.
Thank you very much for answering my question.
The great news, Councillor Vincent, is the city replaced the sidewalk on Bartlett Avenue last year, so we're in pretty good shape up there.
And I understand that. However, I think down the other side, I don't know if that one's been addressed, but maybe it has. We'll see. Thank you.
Further questions of our guest here this evening? Thank you very much, and at this time, I'll close that public hearing. That brings us to our second public hearing this evening, which is on Resolution 4-26, which is to appropriate funds from the state revolving loan fund for improvements to the wastewater treatment facility. Uh, the city has been notified of approval of a requested $22 million loan to fund Phase Two of the improvements at our wastewater treatment facility on Buffmanville Road. This time, I'd open the public hearing on this matter. Manager Moore, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm going to recognize, uh, city engineer, all to the content by way of presentation and orientation to the public hearing content. I will say, um, this is one in a series of planned and-
Thank you. One in a series of, uh, planned improvements that the city has done, uh, as a result of, um, thinking, uh, big picture about the needs of the city. Uh, in years past, we've made improvements on a phased basis, and this is Phase Two. So Amber, please take it away.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. I'll just summarize kind of how we got here briefly. Back in 2017, the city contracted with Wright Pierce to do a facility evaluation of our wastewater treatment plant. That identified a couple layers of priorities of needs, high, medium, and low priorities. Um, high priority needs were addressed in Phase One, which was completed in 2021, a couple years ago. Medium priority is really Phase Two, which is what we're talking about tonight. Phase Three is going to be the lower priority and potentially, uh, capacity upgrades, but that will be assessed at a future time. You may recall, Wright Pierce came in last July and did a, a full presentation, uh, for you all on the wastewater treatment plant and potential capacity improvements. This Phase Two project, uh, preliminary design is complete. We had a separate contract with Wright Pierce for that phase. Uh, we're moving into final design now. That's what we're looking to continue on with. The final design amount is for just over a million dollars. It's $1,082,402. This is for final design permitting and bidding assistance for the city. This final design work is mainly asset upgrades, so equipment and systems that are either failing at or past their useful life, which we need to address in order to maintain our, our operation and be within our permit compliance. This includes upgrades to our grit system, to clarifiers, filtration and sludge-holding tank systems, building upgrades, a lot of, a lot of needs within the existing infrastructure. We're looking at approximately 12 months to complete our final design, um, which would put us around late summer next year, if this moves forward as planned. Um, final design needs to obviously be reviewed by the city as well as the state. DES, Department of Environmental Services, has a heavy review role in this project as well. The state water, uh, Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund for $22 million, that's a 20-year loan repayment. We're looking at 20% principal forgiveness, which is $4.4 million, which is quite significant. And I can answer any questions.
At this time, I will allow any member of the public to speak to the, uh, to the loan opportunity, uh, and then after that, I'll entertain questions from councillors. And at this time, any members of the public wish to speak on this, uh, public hearing? Seeing none, are there any questions from councillors here this evening? Councillor Parity Catanzaro?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I had a question around the DES review. I know that the, um, Department of Environmental Services, um, is facing some tricky funding right now and staffing issues for the upcoming couple of years. And so I just wonder if that ends up being an issue, could that potentially delay this project significantly, or is this something that we see running pretty smoothly?
I think we see this running smoothly. This is the Wastewater Bureau. Um, I don't think we're looking at any unforeseen, uh, problems there. I think we're, I think we'll be on schedule.
Awesome. Thank you.
Further questions from councillors? Thank you, Amber. Appreciate the update. Uh, and at this time, I'll close that public hearing. That brings us to Agenda Item Number Five, which is comments by visitors. The Somersworth City Council welcomes comments by visitors. Uh, we do keep comments to five minutes in length, and we ask that you not enter into any debate with any city official or city councillor. At this time, any members of the public wish to speak? Please come forward. And for the record, please state your name and address, if you would.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Kimberly Shouen. A lot of you know me. I am, uh, an attorney in town and a business owner in Somersworth, 125 High Street. About a month ago, I put a, uh, Foster's article in all of your boxes that said, "Many in Dover can't afford rent. Here are the solutions." This is an article from Foster's Daily Democrat, um, and it talked about affordable housing, workforce housing, and what Dover is trying to do. Uh, I think Somersworth needs to talk about that. We need to think about that as we're dealing with development and apartment approvals in our city. The article, the, the take-home was that for an entry-level worker based on an average yearly wage of $31,000, the maximum affordable rent, not the minimum, not the bottom, the maximum was $785. So when I read this article, I actually had my staff, I didn't do it, but I did have my staff, call all the businesses that would talk to us on High Street. I picked High Street because that is our, kind of our sector in town. Certainly, there are other businesses here, but I picked High Street. We have found 25 businesses that would give us information. The question we asked was, "What is your entry-level wage?" So to be clear, there are folks that some of these businesses making a little more, but this is their entry level, when I'm starting, what I'm making. If you look down through this list, the average wage in Somersworth on High Street is about $14.50 an hour. 14.50. So that advocates or comes out to, in terms of an annual wage, by the way, of about $28,000. What we know from the Foster's article is that $31,000 gives you $785 as a maximum affordable rent. We don't have anybody making that. What concerns me, quite frankly, is that, and you all know this, I've been very vocal about 85 Elm Street, and I'm still going to be vocal about it. We gave them apparently a seven-year tax break. Seven years. They're telling us their apartments are going to rent for 1,700 to 2,200, 158 units, is what I read in my last paperwork from them. That's $313,000 a month that they're making in rent. Yes, there's going to be some expenses, but not one, not one of the 25 people we surveyed in Somersworth can afford a single one of those apartments. And what was really sickening to me is that even if some of these people double up in all of these one-bedrooms, because the 90% of the bedrooms in 85 Elm Street are one-bedroom apartments, two people living on these wages cannot afford one of those apartments. And we, as a city, gave them a million-dollar tax break. Right now, their taxes, if you look at what they're assessed at, they're assessed at about $16,000 a year. That's what they're paying on taxes. If you assess that property at $10 million, which is a low figure, because I'm told it's going to cost them 15 million to build it, their tax burden should be $187,000. So we've given them $169,000 a year in tax breaks. Over seven years, that's 11, 1.1 million dollars in tax breaks that we gave them, and not one of your constituents can live in those houses from High Street. Not one. Now, I recognize that when you're on city council, most of you are older, so you own your own homes. So you're probably not dealing with a rental payment of $2,000. My mortgage is a lot lower than that. I couldn't afford to live in some of these apartments as a lawyer, working in town. I've given you the information. My proposal is that if anyone is going to build here, other towns have an ordinance that says 10% of their buildings have to be affordable housing or workforce housing. And in this instance, I would ask that it be workforce, so that the workers who are actually living here can afford to live here. Because if they can't find a place to live here, they're not going to work here. So our businesses that are on High Street are not going to have employees because they can't afford to live here, which is becoming a problem. I don't know if all of you see the Help Wanted signs? People can't live here. They're commuting from Wakefield. They're commuting from Farmington. That's where they're finding affordable housing. So really, this is kind of a cycle. If we want people to work here, we need them to be able to afford housing here. I would prefer not to have developers really make $300,000 a month and not sponsor a single baseball team, not sponsor anything in our community, do nothing that's giving back, and not have housing for the people who work here. I understand that they're going to come forward with another proposal on, I believe, 28 Green Street, again, asking for a tax break. And my position is, please don't do that. Please start working with the developers and saying, "You know what? If you want to build here, because we don't have a lot of land left, let's make you required to do workforce housing. There are grants available. New Hampshire has some grants available. The federal government has also got some grants available." There is absolutely no reason why we cannot mandate that there has to be 10% of all apartment units above a 20-apartment-unit building that have to be workforce housing. And if they're going to get a tax break, that means my tax dollars pay for it, because that's what's really happening. My taxes are going up to pay for 85 Elm Street that none of my friends and people working here can live in, then I would really suggest it needs to be 20% of affordable housing. I do not believe that it is appropriate to be giving anyone a tax break for not building affordable housing for, in our community. Take it as you will, but that's the position, and I'm going to keep coming back. I think you guys need to see the articles. I put it in all of your boxes. Hopefully, people read it. It's not making it up. It's not liberal media. It's Foster's and what Dover's doing, and we need to also be taking the lead for our own population. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Any further public comment this evening? Yes, please.
Hello, everybody. I haven't been up here in a minute, so I thought I'd come say hi. My name's Bonnie McNair, uh, Ward One, Noble Street. Um, just real quick, I wanted to make everybody aware that Feast Around the World this weekend, and you should all come. And then also, um, tomorrow, we're doing an open house for my new building, well, my new shared space on High Street, 63 High Street, next to Foldit. If you want to come say hi, you can. I'm there now. Um, and that's all. I hope you have a good meeting.
Thank you. Any further public comment this evening? Yes, please.
Richard Brooks, 18 Linden Street, Ward One. Taxes. Obviously, everything costs money. We know that. Um, I know we're starting discussions about replacing our ladder truck. I know we just had to do some repairs to it recently, and as someone that has been in the towing industry, towing a lot of these large vehicles, I'm seeing a trend with newer vehicles, newer trucks specifically. Back in 2007 or eight, I can't remember the year exactly, emissions took over, and these, these, these big diesel trucks have emissions. And there's been a lot of problems with these over the years. I've, I've personally towed a lot of these trucks that have emissions issues, and I think it's becoming to the point where they become an unreliable truck. Not to mention the extra cost of fixing some of these exhaust filters and so on. And I can get into the whole DEF system that feeds that emissions and the whole industry that we've developed to produce this, to save a minute amount of fuel and emissions. I think we're really creating more emissions by producing the DEF system and all the fluid and shipping it to everybody to be distributed and so on and so forth. It's just, it's, it hasn't been beneficial. And the reliability issue is where I'm really headed with this, is we have a truck now that is a ladder truck that was built pre-emissions. These trucks were designed to go thousand, hundreds of thousands of miles, and it's not uncommon to get a million miles out of them. I believe our fire truck's somewhere around the 30,000 miles. It's a drop in the bucket on what these things can do. I personally drive a large record that has 576,000 miles on it currently. No emissions, starts up every day, does its job every day. I've towed nearly every truck in our fleet that's newer with emissions to the dealer, often for a emissions issue. So I think a reliability. Why not keep the old truck, rebody it with a new truck, new ta, new ladder, new tower, whatever the choice is, but keep that chassis that really is a very reliable truck in itself. If we have to rebody it, so be it. I'm sure it's going to save us money, but more importantly, it's going to be a reliable truck in the long run. And when it comes to an emergency vehicle, I'd rather have one that shows up when it's needed, rather than one that's got an issue and might need to go to the shop. It's, you know, an emergency vehicle. We need it in an emergency. So just, there's a lot more to this. I could spend hours talking about this, but I just, I want us to at least consider that alternative when we're moving forward with this. Thank you.
Any further public comment this evening? Yes, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Katie Goulet. I live in Ward One. Um, I recently sent an email to a few of the, uh, city councillors in regards to the community path that connects the Noble Pines Park to the West High Street. Um, I feel like it will be used by a lot of schoolchildren walking to school this year, and I just wanted to, um, put a voice and a face to that email. Um, I am interested in, uh, supporting that project, whatever it may turn out to be. Um, and I'm curious to know also the outlook or the, um, duration of the construction area that's at the West High Street end of that path. Um, it looks temporary, but it's been there for quite some time, and it's partially obstructing that outlet of the path. Um, so I look forward to moving forward on that project. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate putting a face with a name. So thanks for coming tonight. Further public comment this evening? Seeing none, that'll conclude Agenda Item Number Five, and that'll bring us to Agenda Item Number Six, which is the consent calendar. Chair, want to entertain a motion on the consent calendar. Councillor Peppin-
Motion accepted as presented.
Councillor Peppin moves that we accept the consent calendar as presented, segmented by Councillor Cameron. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approval of the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion passes. The consent calendar is approved. Brings us to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is comments by city councillors. Any comments by city councillors here this evening? Councillor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Kim. Thank you so very much, because I love when people do the work and the education to, to tell, for what you just told us. Thank you. You know, I'm an advocate of, uh, and this, this is one of the pieces of the story that touched on me also was, are they going to give to the baseball? Are they going to give to the girl softball? Are they going to give to cheerleading? Are they going to help the city in any way? You know, I've been an advocate, because you know, most of you know I own Hilltop Fireworks. I'm a business owner here, and my company gives a lot of money to this city. Uh, the recent, uh, and, you know, people say I'm up here, you know, I know, patting myself on the back. That's not why I'm here. I think that a city, when they have people that give, uh, companies that are making millions of dollars, companies that are making hundreds of thousands of dollars, should give to the city to make it better. Better your city you live in. Or, or do we just want to be a bunch of, uh, for those who are, a bunch of absentee landlords that just want to rake in all the cash and don't care about the city? You know, uh, the latest thing that Hilltop did was, um, we gave $8,000 to the school system for a blocking sled. We would have given 13,000, but because of tariffs and so forth, we were a little bit lower on our, on our, on our money intake. Um, but it makes me proud to sit up here and be part of the community, not only giving, um, my time and efforts to help everybody else, but, uh, to give some, um, you know, um, a money value to help out. And, uh, I really wish, you know, a lot more companies would do it. Uh, I'm going to pick on a couple companies, not tonight, but, um, I don't know if I should use the word pick on. That may be a little harsh. Um, but I'm going to point out a couple of companies that make a lot of money here through the city. So you companies that are making all kinds of money by bidding and coming to the city, how about giving a little back? We, we could use it. We could put that money towards good use to better our parks, to better, uh, all, uh, you know, police fire and EMS, just to help us out a little bit. Um, it doesn't hurt. Thank you.
Further comments by city- Further comments by city councilors? Councilor Goodwin?
Thank you. I'd also like to thank Kim for coming out and raising this issue. I think the Mayor's Housing Task Force has talked about this issue and is likely to take action on it. I've missed the last couple of meetings, unfortunately, but this has been something we've been talking about. Not to get into semantics, but as a housing developer in my day job, I have, and a planning nerd, I have particular insight on the topic, and I just wanted to clarify some things here. One of the things I take umbrage with is your list of wages. I think that's very accurate. You'll notice this list of businesses you provided include places like Burger King, CBS, Dollar Tree, Home Depot, Walmart. We got Market Basket, TJ Maxx, Target, Starbucks, Staples. These are huge publicly traded companies. It is a two-part system. This is wage theft. People need to be paid a fair living wage in addition to having housing opportunities. So let's not pretend that this is fair, because that's the argument you gave us. You said like, oh, this is a fair wage, someone starting out, like, this is a reasonable wage. It's not. You can't live on this wage. So they need to be, like, you know, I just want to set the record straight, and I know that might not, you know, you're making an argument here for housing, so that wasn't part of your main argument here. But I just want to clarify that this is also problematic. We, as a city, don't necessarily have the authority to set a higher minimum wage, but this is not a living wage in the costs of the world today. I would also say that this is not representative of the area median income, which is what HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, thank you, sets affordable rents by. So HUD area median income in Stratford County is $86,000, which is significantly more than these, starting these low wages here. These people need housing. I don't contest that. But I will say, the standard of which affordability is set is off of the median income, not the average, the median, it's a more stable center metric of what the typical person in Stratford County makes. So 50% AMI rent, so 50% area median income rents, according to the federal government in Stratford County, a studio should be $1,150. That's 50% affordability. That's, in the planning world, that's called deeply affordable. The only people that can afford to build a building and have that rent have tens of millions of dollars in subsidies. Because construction workers aren't making $14 an hour. A plumber is making more than, you know, a lot of professional white-collar people these days, which is great and is a secret that should not be a secret, like, get people in the trade. It's like, they pay well if you're good. But it's expensive to build. Materials are expensive. Trades are expensive. I don't contest that developers need to make money. It's a for-profit business. That's how housing is created. However, having build buildings in communities like Somersworth and working, you know, to build a project in Somersworth, I can tell you, the numbers are marginal. They may not work. That tax credit, that subsidy that the city gave, $1 million over seven years, very, in all likelihood, was the difference for them doing that project versus not doing that project. And in my math, more housing is better, because we need more housing. There's a lack of housing. We also need affordable housing, and I think that's part of the math we need to do. But developers alone, without subsidy, without federal money, without the Somersworth Housing Authority, cannot get to the 50% AMI number, which is almost double the number you gave us for affordability. And just to provide context, workforce housing, again, this is a bit of a semantics thing, workforce housing is kind of this broad term, and it typically, in my understanding, is anywhere from 80% AMI to 110% or 120% AMI. So it's like, you know, this little bell curve over sort of the average persons, what the average person can afford. So 80% AMI rent for a studio is $1,700 in Stratford County. And I just looked this up while you were talking. And a two-bedroom is $2,200, which is actually really close to the Green Street rents you stated. So by the federal standard, Green Street is actually providing workforce housing with remarkably little subsidy. Those apartments would not be built and rent for that price in Dover or Portsmouth. So that's actually, if they deliver rents at $1,700 to $2,200, as previously stated, that actually is kind of remarkable. And I don't, I know, that's complicated necessarily for people that are in the business, but like, it's expensive to build, and if you can deliver rents that are technically anywhere near 80% AMI, it's impressive. So I don't want to diminish what that project and the opportunity that project has. I think the city, in my view, did the right thing in providing the subsidy. I think we could do better due diligence, perhaps, on vetting, you know, whether a project is worthy of subsidy. I think we can also go back and revisit our 79E ordinance to include additional subsidy for people that are providing affordable housing, which would be a good incentive. So it's like, that subsidy is going directly to, you know, someone that makes a commitment to have some percent of the units be affordable. But I think it's a great conversation. I just like, want to acknowledge that, one, that the city, the mayor, the Mayor's Housing Task Force, we are talking about this. It is something on our radar, and it is just complicated. Because, you know, the other thing I'll add is, once you start mandating private developers to create affordable housing, you are now creating the marginal cost for unsubsidized housing to go up. So now the market rate units get more expensive. Because at the end of the day, the developer needs to hit some sort of margin to get to pay the bank interest and to pay their investors the minimum return. And that's just the math. They're not going to build unless they can figure that math out. And, you know, in order to make up the difference, if they're subsidizing 20% of the units to be affordable, they're charging, most likely, charging more for the market rate unit. So it's just one of those things where it's like, it's, you know, there's no silver bullet. And I think it's a nuanced conversation. I just want to acknowledge that I think we're working on it, and we're trying to find the right solution for Somersworth, and thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Further comments by city councilors here this evening? Councilor Parry, Katniss Erle?
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate this conversation that we're having. I think everybody's learning a lot from all sides here on housing, and I appreciate, Kim, you coming and talking to us and doing this homework, and Councilor Goodwin's insight as well. I wanted to comment on Katie Goulet's message around the community path and directly respond to your question around the construction at the bottom. And more, just to, somebody else may have better memory than me on specifically what this is, but if I recall correctly, that path was intentionally closed due to some safety issues. And the things that we would need to do in order to make it a safe walking path, again, would be more than just restoring what was there. We would need to, on any new project, meet certain accessibility requirements and things like that. I agree that that path is really helpful, especially for kids that live up on the hill to get right down to school. Otherwise, they have to go, you know, through that high-traffic intersection. We've had some conversation around that. So I would encourage the mayor, or I don't know, Councilor Witherman, if you have this authority as your sitting mayor tonight, to refer, looking at this, to whatever appropriate committee.
We could start with Public Works and the Environment. I chair that, and I can put that on as an agenda item to at least begin vetting it out a little bit.
Perfect. Thanks. I think that there's probably a way that we can get a safe path there again. It would be really helpful for the students, and I thank Ms. Goulet for coming forward and offering also to help see this through. I'm sure a lot of community members up there would be happy to get involved.
Thank you for that. Further comments by city councilors here this evening? Councilor Peppin?
I wasn't going to comment on this, but it does bother me. Sometimes, I don't like giving subsidies for developers to come into the community, but sometimes you have to if you're looking at the long-term goal of the city. As a fire department member, I used to inspect most of the businesses down through town here, and lots of times you go in, we were on a rotating basis. I wouldn't see the business until another four years, because another officer would inspect the businesses. And most of the time, those businesses were gone, simply because they have no foot traffic, no people in the downtown area. Years ago, I hate to say my age, but it was when we had GE going, the shoe factories were going and stuff. We had all kinds of population in the community. Before urban renewal, there used to be all kinds of brick buildings here with all kinds of residents used to live into it. All the little stores were there for years and years, and the same people maintained them and kept them in service, the people that were in the community. And that's gone. This community has changed. We lost GE, we lost all the shoe shops. And sometimes you have to turn around and figure out, how can we bring people back into this community? It's very, very hard to get anybody to agree on what's good for the city, for one thing. But I think we can come to the conclusion that if you want to have a walking community, which I've heard this council and other people saying, we need walking community, you're going to put people in it. And also, you're going to try to draw some type of a developer to come in and actually do something in the city of some sort. If they can go somewhere else and build a building and get us subsidized, whatever it is, we're going to miss out. We have to find something in this city that we can draw people into this community, developers that want to invest in our community. And I hate to say, yes, it does cost us a little bit of money, cost the taxpayers money, but we need it to come back and look at the big picture of how it will probably benefit the community in the whole, right? As far as our local businesses, hopefully, it will develop more businesses, and hopefully, it will make competition so these price raises, these ungodly numbers, come up. I can't control what businesses pay, especially when you turn around and look at some of the businesses that are pretty well-off, you would tend to think that it could pay a little bit more. I don't know the complete answers on it. I do know that it costs a lot of money to develop things. It costs, and it means probably biting a little bit of the bullet for seven years till you can get some people back into this community that benefits the community in the long run. I think it's sometimes we have to make that little goal, so I just want to comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Further comments by city councilors? Councilor Barry?
Most of the councilors kind of already touched on a lot of what I want to say, but I just want to bring up what Mr. Brooks brought up a little bit ago about the fire truck. I love thinking outside the box, and I love coming with solutions to issues if we see them. Just two things I want to put out there around that topic. Emissions, I understand that there's back and forth about that, but I also know that there are certain requirements for any new vehicle and for vehicles being on the road and different things. So I'm not as familiar with what the requirements are, but that's one thing I think we would run into if we kept a certain truck for too long of a time, that we would run into a problem with what's required. And my other comment was, I understand reworking a body can also be more cost-effective, but I also worked in an industry that they tried to do that with other trucks, and they actually couldn't find anybody to touch a truck that wasn't theirs or that was already used from another manufacturer. So I'd just be curious if there is even people who will do that out there. But the other reason I'm a little against the rebodying is, that would put that truck out of commission specifically to do that, and I don't know that we could be down a truck at that time and what we would do to fill that for emergency situations. But I love the out-of-box thinking. I just don't know where we would run into some problems with that thought. But that was just, I wanted to address that and just go from there.
Thank you. Further comments by city councilors here tonight? Seeing none, that'll move us to Agenda Item Number 8, which is Communications. There are none this evening. Agenda Item Number 9 is Presentation of Petitions and Disposal of Them by Reference or Otherwise. We have no petitions. Agenda Item Number 10 is the Mayor's Report. Obviously, the mayor's not here, so there is no report this evening. And that'll bring us to Agenda Item Number 11, which is Report of Standing Committees. And if you'll bear with me, I'll start with the Finance Committee. The minutes are not yet available, but Finance Committee did meet on Monday, August 4th, at 5:00 p.m. We had a couple of agenda items to discuss. The first was with regard to the video camera system at the Police Department. That has come to the end of its useful life. Chief Sunderland was in attendance and explained that they are unable to get parts for repair of this equipment right now. And it's not only the actual working camera heads, but it's the storage system and the technology needed to store that information. So he's in the process of getting additional quotes. We believe that to be within the Finance Committee's spending authority. So we did authorize replacement of the camera system at the Police Department, and the anticipated funding for that would be drug forfeiture funds and money from the city's cable fund, a combination of both of those to support replacement of that camera system there. Next item we took up was the aerial apparatus replacement that has been spoken to already here this evening. The committee was informed that the Public Safety Committee had met and endorsed moving forward with replacement of the aerial apparatus, and the Finance Committee did as well. We voted 4-0 to move forward with the replacement of the aerial apparatus. There is a resolution to move forward with the signing of a contract for that apparatus in first reading here tonight. Second reading will be at our first meeting in September, I believe, on September 11th, September 2nd, sorry. Thank you, Manager Moore. At which time, council would be able to take action on this. Allegiance Fire Apparatus is the vendor. Fire Chief Moore was in attendance and provided an update on the process they went through in terms of receiving bids. They had an in-house apparatus committee that was made up of representatives from the department that designed the specifications for this new piece of equipment. It is an aerial platform truck versus an aerial ladder, so substantially different piece of equipment for elevated work. There were three bids received, and the Pierce product was at the midpoint of the bids. It met all of the bid criteria and satisfied the department's needs. The price for the aerial apparatus is quoted right now at $2.3-plus million. They are, right now, the offer is for $40,000 as a trade-in for our current truck. I will say that the committee felt comfortable with moving forward with this, with a little bit of hesitation on the trade-in value for our current aerial ladder. We asked Chief Moore to continue to work with Allegiance Fire to see if we could get more money for that aerial appliance. The difficulty with this purchase, beyond the simple price point, is the delivery time. It is 36 months from the point at which we order it. So if we were to order it today, and we're not, but we would not receive this piece of equipment until 2028. That is true of most apparatus manufacturers now, taking two, three, four years to deliver on an order. We had a lengthy discussion about why that is. Fewer vendors, demand in the marketplace, that was driven by government dollars after COVID, and all of this is just a very difficult and complex topic. We would not, the Finance Director provided us with some options in terms of how we would fund this. That would be done at a later date after we order, probably a year out from actual delivery of the truck. But the city manager will provide city council with additional funding strategies to consider between now and the first meeting in September, as to how we might best proceed with funding this piece of equipment. Long and short, though, the Finance Committee did vote in favor of moving forward with supporting the resolution, which is in first reading here this evening. The other item that we took up under the Fire Department was scheduled capital improvement to replace self-contained breathing apparatus. This is year two of a multi-year plan to replace the self-contained breathing apparatus that the department has. Like all fire department equipment, it reaches the end of its useful life. It needs to be replaced. The pricing came in rather competitively for the self-contained breathing apparatus, so we're going to actually leverage that pricing to purchase the fit-testing equipment so we can have that in so we can have that in-house. Right now, they have to borrow that equipment. It sometimes is delayed in getting that to make sure that the face piece fits each individual firefighter correctly, so that will be part of this purchase as we move forward. So. The fourth agenda item was the Wright-Pierce Water Treatment Improvements Agreement. As City Engineer outlined, we are moving forward with phase two of our upgrades at the plant, and again, looking to move forward with an agreement with Wright-Pierce in that capacity. And that'll conclude the report of the finance committee. It'll move us to public safety. Councillor Pepin.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for doing half my report, which is appreciated. No, we did have a meeting on July 24th here in the city council chambers. It started on at 5:25. First thing on the, all members were present except one, in which Councillor Mischu filled in, anybody mayor. First thing on agenda was approval of minutes of May 5th, which was passed 3:01 abstained. As you reported, on basically the fire apparatus, I can't put anything else into that report, which you covered it very, very well, Mayor. The self-contained breathing apparatus is the same thing. I'm sorry, I'm a little lost since he started my report. Okay. Yep, two pages already gone by. All right. Guess the next thing would be EMS report. Chris Holgin gave a report from Stewards Ambulance Service. He gave us his response times. In the month of May, they went out to 150 calls. 130 of those were transports. The response time was about 4 minutes 1 second. In June, they went out to 161 calls, 100 of them were transports. The response time was 4 minutes 15 seconds. He did give us an update on some of the new tech equipment that they put on the ambulances. I guess they have a new type of breathing tube that they got, has a TV monitor, so they can actually see where the tube is going down through their throat. So that's been on, that's on their equipment, and some new type of medication, some type of high-grade Tylenol that they have put on their apparatus right now. So that was it. Police Department update, she saw, someone that gave us a report on a coughs go grant. They have hired a police officer that is certified onto that program, so that program is a substance abuse program, which they have a certified officer that is now inside the department, which will be able to take care of that program and help with that grant, meet the grants requirements. He also gave us an update on the camera system, which you gave a very good analogy of that. Turn the page again. We also had an update on the storage room for evidence. It needed some updating with shelving and stuff. The chief gives an update on that, and he also gave us an update that it would be nice to have some improvements on the evidence software things. The committee voted 4-0 in supporting of upgrading the shelving and also the surveillance software. He also did give us an update that him and the city manager are working through a policy on the current structure of their operations. Right now, they have two divisions, patrol and investigations. They want to go to a type of operation and support structure operations. So we adjourned at 6:18.
Thank you. Appreciate your report.
Have a question. Can I have a question?
Sure.
And don't, doesn't matter who answers it. I can't remember, drawing my memory for the people here and at home, was the SCBA's in his budget already to be replaced? Where was that money coming from?
Defer to the city manager.
Okay, so it's in CIP, so it's, that money will come from...
The appropriation in FY '26 for that CIP item was $107,000.
Right. Thank you very much for reminding me of that, and the people home appreciate that.
Very good. That concludes public safety. I'll go next to recreation. Councillor Cameron. No report from Councillor Cameron on recreation. Government operations, Councillor Mischu.
Yeah, no report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Economic development, Councillor Goodwin.
No report.
And that'll bring us to public works and the environment to close out the reports of committees. We did meet on August 4th as well. We piggybacked that meeting with the finance committee meeting. We did take up the water, the Wright-Pierce Professional Services Agreement for the water treatment plant. I did misspeak earlier. I said wastewater treatment plant. We have things going on at both plants, so apologies there. The committee did endorse moving forward with that professional services agreement. We had a discussion of a couple of planning board items, actually, that will ultimately require action by the city council, and we wanted to, if you will, suss those out at the committee level to see if there was an appetite to move them forward. Two things, 28 Green Street, that was mentioned here this evening. There is a discussion if that project on the corner of Fayette and Green were to move forward and get planning board approval. One of the concepts that's being discussed is to make Fayette Street a one-way street to allow for angled parking. That would increase parking capacity in that neighborhood rather substantially. There was, I think, an appetite at the planning board for this, and the Public Works and Environment Committee also thought favorably of this idea, mindful of the details that would have to be vetted out with engineers and all of that. Up to and including which way, down or up, and there's some debate about that, but there was no objection to city staff continuing to work with the developers and the planning board on looking at that option. The other is a development on High Street, across from the Goodwill Store, Empire Beauty Salon, Omni and Brewing. There's a large, largely vacant lot there. Had been proposed for a car wash some time ago. There's a small home on the property, once had a veterinary service in the, in the one side of the house there. Press Cafe, which is, I'll describe it as a fairly high-end fast food, is looking to put a store in there, but also a number of other retail establishments in what I'll call a fairly upscale plaza. They do envision in the front of the area, a couple of pickleball courts, some outdoor dining. So again, kind of a different-looking development. Their engineers right now are proposing a traffic signal that would be shared by both their development and the Goodwill, Omni and Brewing, Empire Beauty Salon development across the street. In traffic terms, there's something known as a warrant, and it seems to meet the warrant based upon their traffic engineer's evaluation. The city did have it evaluated by its third-party traffic engineer that represents the city on these matters, who agreed with the developer that a traffic signal is warranted there. The devil is in the details in terms of sequencing and timing and all of that. I know at the committee level, there was a lot of discussion about if the developer were to put in the signal that it be the same equipment, that it be tied in with our other signals along the High Street corridor for coordination, same camera systems, so that it would be turnkey, if you will, for the city. I think the committee generally favored the idea of the signal there, again, mindful of the details of this. The concern was if this would be done at the applicant's expense, which would be many hundreds of thousands of dollars, and if down the road, we wanted to put it in, if it wasn't done at the time of development, that would be borne by the city. There was also an appetite by the committee that maybe it made sense for the developer to make an in-kind contribution to look at that entire corridor in terms of the timing and sequencing and just traffic flow overall. But again, generally favored by the planning board, and again, generally favored by the Public Works and Environment Committee. City staff will continue to work with the developer on that. And again, both of these I bring up here because if we are to accept these off-site improvements, whether it's the traffic signal or a one-way street, that would be action required by the city council. So just kind of teeing that up, it's something on the horizon, and keep an eye out for more details there. We had a discussion, agenda item four was a discussion of public works operations, and we took no action, and I'm not sure any action was being sought. It was just a kind of a global look at the things that our public works staff does. They're a relatively lean crew, and they do a lot of different things beyond plowing snow and sweeping streets, filling potholes. They do curbside brush collection. We talked about the resources that are needed for this. It's an almost all-hands-on-deck operation. It happens twice in the spring and twice in the fall, and it takes them away from these other duties, at least for that period of time. After Christmas, they spend time collecting Christmas trees, as a way of example. They pick up bag leaves, they'll pick up metal at curbside. And we had a discussion about whether or not these things made sense or not, right? And we kind of made hay with the idea of Christmas trees. We don't deliver them, but we pick them up, right? So is that something we should continue to do? I think the committee generally likes the idea of these customer-friendly, customer-service offerings that we do, but we are mindful of the bandwidth of public works, so we left it with the city manager and Director Babinski, just to continue to let this churn, if you will, to see if any ideas manifest to bring forward to committee for potential action. But it's more of a conversation than anything else at this point in time. Director Babinski and City Engineer Hall provided us with an update on a number of capital projects which are underway, the most notable and visible of which probably is the High Street corridor between South Street and West High Street. SUR Construction is replacing the sidewalk. That work is largely done on the sidewalk. For those of you that drive that corridor, try to avoid it tomorrow. They will be milling High Street, so that's tearing off those upper layers of hut top and sloping the hut top, getting ready for final paving. It's a lot of trucks and a lot of equipment, and it will back up traffic more than the work has typically been done there, as you've seen. And that is going to bring us closer to the end. SUR is also dealing with the improvements of the intersection just up the street from City Hall here at Constitutional Way. As council knows, we authorized expenditure of funds to add a crosswalk at that intersection and the rectangular rapid-flash beacons. That work is underway and progressing well with the same crew, so they're shifting their work from the High Street corridor up to this intersection to get that all done on or around the same time. The company out of Massachusetts, GVC, is continuing the work on the water line replacement on Main Street from Indigo Hill Road to Netto Street. That work is continuing. There have been a few difficulties encountered out there, not the least of which is they struck a two-inch natural gas line that required a fire response and such, so slowed things down for a little bit that day, but again, just kind of an ongoing project down in that area. And as you saw in the city manager's report, pavement line striping is largely complete here in the city. Still a few stop bars and things of that nature to be done, but the vast majority of it is complete. As is typical with public works, we discussed a number of miscellaneous items, just to flag city staff on repairs that are needed, some items in the city, and we adjourned. So that concludes that report, and that'll bring me back to my city council agenda. Bear with me. Any reports of special committees here this evening? Seeing none, I'll refer to the city manager for his report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to just briefly address some of the business that's before you as unfinished business this evening. City Engineer Amber Hall did a great job providing the updated orientation about our wastewater treatment facility project. I'll remind you that that action constitutes borrowing by entering into the loan agreement with the state of New Hampshire. So we held the required public hearing, and now, and then later in your agenda, you'll be taking the vote, and a two-thirds vote is required in order to pass that. The next resolution is related to the contract to move from preliminary design, which is complete, to final design by Wright-Pierce Engineering. This borrowing resolution that I just spoke to needs to be completed first so that we can, through this action, prepare to expend the funds to proceed with the final design. I don't believe there needs to be further elaboration on the next resolution for the continuation of our blue bag program, which I believe I addressed at the previous meeting, and is a pretty straightforward action from my perspective. There's two ordinances on your agenda this evening under new business. There's some very well-done materials by Director Mears for both of those items, related to amending the zoning ordinance. One, amending the zoning ordinance, section three, establishment of zoning districts, and the other zoning ordinance, a new section 34 in home-based childcare. That's it for ordinances. We have a few resolutions on here for the initial reading. That includes naming of Dahlia Court, which is recommended by E911 Committee. We do also have something that we'll be bringing up and was summarized very well, related to the acquisition of the Pierce Enforcer 100 rear-mount platform aerial apparatus. We'll be presenting with you some more details associated with funding strategies for that equipment at your next meeting on the 2nd of September. The next one is the self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department. This item recommended by both the public safety and the finance committee, of course, appears in your capital improvement plan. We are in the second year of three for that program of replacements, and if the city council would see fit, we do see value because of the nature of it being a planned expense, the second in a series that, of advancing potentially, second reading today, if you would consider, so that we can move forward with that initiative efficiently. Again, at your next meeting, we'll be talking about the Wright-Pierce final engineering design for the next planned improvements for the water treatment facility. We'll have, we'll be able to speak more to details associated with that project, and the, of course, those funds are budgeted for in the FY '26 Water Enterprise budget. Thank you to the son mayor for addressing the roadway markings, which will be complete this week. Also, I wanted to draw the community's attention, or actually recognize, from my seat, the wonderful work of our police department over this past week with the very successful National Night Out that took place at Memorial Drive. I think it was a wonderful representation of our community. It was an impressive effort and teamwork by the department. Clearly, each officer, each member of the department, be they sworn or non-s sworn, civilian or otherwise, contributed significant effort to that, and clearly saw themselves, each individually, as hosting the community as part of that effort, and I thought it was very well done. Want to congratulate Chief Sunderland and his team for that. We also had this weekend, the Police Association's Car Show. I was also in attendance there and able to see the tremendous dedication of the Police Association and the team they have assembled to put that event on. It was very vibrant, it was a very beautiful... It was very vibrant, it was a very beautiful day, and a great contribution by the Association to our community and I want to thank them for that. Mr. Assistant Mayor, I think that concludes my report.
Thank you, Manager Moore, appreciate that. Brings us to Agenda Item Number 13, which is nominations, appointments, and elections. What we have before you for council action tonight, Arthur Roseberry Yoder for appointment to the Conservation Commission for a term of three years and Mark Richardson for appointment to the Cemetery Board of Trustees for a term of five years. What is the wish of the council? Consular Vincent?
Would it be appropriate, thank you, Your Honor, would it be appropriate to direct to one of these, one at a time?
You can do them both together if that's where you're going.
I'd like to move that both of them are moved forward.
Consular Vincent moves for the appointment of both Mr. Roseberry and Mr. Richardson to the respective boards. Is there a second? Consular Cameron, second? Any discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of appointing both to their respective boards, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and both individuals are appointed. Thank you. Brings us to Agenda Item Number 14, which is lay on the table. We have no items on the table this evening. Brings us to Agenda Item Number 15, which is unfinished business. First item is ordinance Number 2525. Listen to the City Clerk for a reading of the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance 2525, to amend Chapter 19, zoning ordinance, Section 14, historic district by adding exempt activities.
Ordinance Number 2525, having been read a first and second time and subject to a public hearing, is now before you for any amendment?
Question.
I think this is in the wrong section.
It's still in committee, if I understand this.
I think this is lay in the table, I think this is a typo.
Got it. So this should still be in committee then?
This is still in committee, we have not seen this yet. I think it was supposed to be in Item 14. I could be wrong, but it's definitely not at a committee because I'm planning to have this on the economic committee.
Fair enough. So without objection, we will move on and not have any business on ordinance 2525 this evening. Very good. Brings us to resolutions under unfinished business, Resolution 4-26. She catches up, City Clerk.
Sorry.
You're good.
Resolution 426, to appropriate funds from the State Revolving Loan Fund for improvements to the wastewater treatment facility.
Resolution 4-26, having been read a first and second time, is now before you for any amendment. Seeing no amendment, the Chair will entertain a motion on the resolution. Motion by Consular Goodwin to approve the resolution. Is there a second? Seconded by Consular Peppin. Any discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of the resolution, you'll signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll signify by saying no. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Consular Witham?
Yes.
Consular Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Gibson?
Sorry.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Mishu?
Yes.
I was waiting to see how Consular Gibson would answer that, so that was clever, that was great. So, that does require a two-thirds vote, which we have this evening, so the resolution is adopted. Brings us to Resolution 5-26 and back to the City Clerk for a reading of the resolution by title only.
Resolution 526, to authorize the City Manager to contract with Wright Pierce Engineering of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, for final engineering design for the Summersworth wastewater treatment facility improvements.
Resolution 5-26, having been read a first and second time, is now before you for any amendment. Seeing no amendment, the Chair will entertain a motion on Resolution 5-26. Consular Parity Catanzaro?
Move it, be adopted.
Consular Parity Catanzaro moves that Resolution 5-26 be adopted, seconded by Consular Goodwin. Any discussion? Consular Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just once again, I'd like to know, funding, how is this funded again, just so the people at home know.
Further, the City Manager.
So, this...
Mike?
The contract for Wright Pierce that is the subject of Resolution 526 will be funded through the borrowing associated with the previous action for the State Revolving Loan Fund.
And is that money taken out of a fund that we have already created, maybe?
I believe it's paid for out of the wastewater.
That's where I'm going, yep.
Ultimately.
Yes. So that's covered by that, so, just so the people that are listening understand, have a clear view of what's going on, that we're not digging into our pocket. It's already money that's...
It's paid through the rates.
Paid through the rates. Thank you very much.
And just to that point, Consular Vincent, I think as you know, council has been very diligent about readdressing the rates periodically in anticipation of some of this, not to say that we don't need to continue to look at that, but we're appropriately postured for this.
Yes, I was proud of that vote, thank you.
Further discussion on Resolution 5-26. Seeing none, if you're in favor of the resolution, you'll signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll signify by saying no. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Consular Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Mishu?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Resolution 5-26 is adopted. Brings us to Resolution 6-26. City Clerk, if you could read by title only.
Resolution 6-26, to authorize the City Manager to extend a contract with Way Zero of Riley, North Carolina, to distribute specially-marked bags to authorized vendors as part of the city's pay-per-bag program.
Resolution 6-26 has been read a first and second time, is now before council for any amendment. Seeing no amendment, the Chair will entertain a motion on Resolution 6-26. Consular Vincent?
I'll make a motion and move on it.
Consular Vincent moves for the adoption of Resolution 6-26, seconded by Consular Goodwin. Any discussion? Consular Barry?
I just wanted to make a quick note of this. I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I know that there were some issues with the bags not too long ago and if we were not moving into more of a, the toter system, I would probably want to look at this a little bit further, but I don't think it's worth trying to find a whole new vendor and looking into that, but I will, I just want to put a bug in the ear that we're making sure that what we're getting is what we're paying for, so.
Consular Vincent?
Thank you again, Your Honor. I just want to kind of mention, I know that this will definitely be on the radar, that this program is coming to an end and to get the right amount of bags, so having a thousand left without having to pay for it, is where to be on target and I know that the people that are ordering are going to have that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. It's an interesting comment, Consular Barry, with regard to the quality of the bags. I see the social media posts, I talk to people about them. I must just be the lucky guy. I have never had a bad trash bag. I've never had one rip, I've never lost the handles. I don't know what it is, but I have good luck with the trash bags. That means the one I'm going to fill for next week is probably going to fail now, for sure, but I find the bag quality's fine, so, there you go. Oh, we're a bit off track. Anyways, Resolution 6-26, any further discussion? Consular Parity Catanzaro?
I, just sparking off of what Consular Vincent just said, do we know that the bag vendors are getting some sort of heads-up in a year or so, that the program will be ending in a year or so, just so that they can?
I'll defer to the City Manager, but I don't think council has taken any official action to end our pay-per-bag program despite Waste Management wanting to move forward with a toter program, but I'll defer to the City Manager.
This extension is, by virtue of being truncated, is, I imagine, but I can't say for sure, that those conversations came up about a potential change and I think the Assistant Mayor said it best, which is, the specific details associated with the Waste Management contract extension that include that CART transition in two years, there are several details associated with making that program operational. It's going to be a significant work product for the staff in that two-year period, likely including ordinance changes, et cetera. So, I think the best way to describe it is that a full evaluation of all the options associated with implementing that CART program is on the table and something we'll be focusing on.
Awesome. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of the resolution, you'll signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Consular Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Mishu?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Resolution 6-26 is adopted. Brings us to Agenda Item Number 16, which is new business. We have two ordinances this evening. First is ordinance Number 1-26. City Clerk, if you'd read the ordinance.
Ordinance Number 1-26, to amend Chapter 19, zoning ordinance, Section 3, Establishment of Zoning Districts, August 11th of 2025. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Summersworth, that the ordinance of the City of Summersworth as amended be further amended as follows. Revised Chapter 19, zoning ordinance, Section 3, Establishment of Zoning Districts with the addition of the following sections. 19.3(c) (c) (2)(a), if no dimension is given on the zoning maps, the location of any boundary shall be determined by the Director of Planning and Community Development, or their designee, by use of the graphic scale shown on zoning maps. 19.3(c) (e), lots split by zoning district boundaries. Where the boundary line of the commercial-industrial zoning district divides a lot in single or joint ownership at the time of passage of the ordinance establishing the boundary line, the following provisions shall apply. 19.3(c)(e)(1), the uses and other standards of either district may, at the opinion of the owner, extend beyond the zoning boundary, line up to a maximum distance of 100 feet from that zoning boundary line. For any area in which this allowance is used, for any period of time in which this allowance is used, that area shall be treated as if its zoning designation were the zone that is being extended. 19.3(c)(e)(2), the provisions of this section shall not apply to the following. 19.3(c)(e)(2)(a), overlay districts. 19.3(c)(3)(e)(2)(b), automobile uses including auto convenience market, motor vehicle repair garage station, automobile sales, motor vehicle service. This ordinance shall take effect upon passage. Sponsored by Consular David A. Witham and approved by the City Attorney.
Sorry, I suppose you can blame me for having to read all those points and dots and all of that, so apologies in advance, so. Ordinance Number 1-26 will remain a first reading until our next meeting, at which time we shall have a public hearing. Brings us to ordinance Number 2-26. City Clerk, if you'd read the ordinance.
Ordinance 2-26, to amend Chapter 19, zoning ordinance, to add new Section 34, home-based childcare and revised Table 4.a)(3, accessory uses, Section 25, definitions and Section 8 home occupations, August 11th of 2025. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Summersworth, that the ordinances of the City of Summersworth as amended be further amended as follows. Revised Chapter 19, zoning ordinance, to add a new Section 34, home-based childcare, with the following language. 19.34)(a), purpose. This section is enacted in accordance with provisions of RSA 672,1, Roman numeral 5, and RSA 674,16, Roman numeral 6, and serves to increase childcare opportunities. To that end, all types of home-based care, family care and group family care, shall be allowed as an accessory to the primary residential use. Family or group family childcare shall be allowed as an accessory use to any primary residential use. 19.34)(b), definition. For the purposes of this section, the following terms are defined as. 19.34)(b)(1), accessory use, a subordinate incidental use located on a lot occupied by the principal residential use. 19.34)(b)(2), family childcare, in occupied residence in which childcare is regularly provided for less than 24 hours per day, except emergencies, for one to six children from one or more unrelated families. The six children shall include any foster children residing in the home and all children who are related to the caregiver, except children who are 10 years of age or older. Daytime care for up to six preschool-aged children at any one time in the home of the provider plus, on an after-school basis, up to three school-aged children who attend a full-day program outside of the daycare home. The numbers of children set forth here include the provider's own biological, adopted, step or foster children, if those children are less than 10 years of age. 19.34)(b)(3), group family childcare, in occupied residence in which childcare is regularly provided for less than 24 hours per day, except emergencies, for seven to 12 children from one or more unrelated families. The 12 residing in the home, except children who are 10 years of age or older. In addition to the 12 children, up to five children enrolled in a full-day school program may also be cared for, up to five hours per day on school days and all day during school holidays. 19.34)(b)(4), home-based childcare, a childcare program operated in the home in which the provider resides. 19.34)(b)(5), residential use, use in a structure or portion of a structure which is a person's permanent principal residence. It does not include use in motorhomes, travel trailers, other recreational vehicles or transient accommodations. Transient accommodations means room or lodging available to the public for a fee for a continuous period of less than one month in a building such as a hotel, motel, inn, tourist home, tourist house or court, summer camp, resort lodge or cabin. 19.34(c), requirements for operation. 19.34(c)(1), prior to the beginning operation, all home-based care providers shall submit to the city proof that all requirements for such programs and adopted rules of the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, H-E-C-4002 as amended, are met for the license to operate a family childcare or group family childcare. As required by D H H S, a copy of the renewed license shall be provided to the city so long as the care operation exists. To amend the table of uses, Table 4.a)(3, accessory uses with the following. Delete 13, childcare, home and replace with family childcare. Delete 14, group childcare, home and replace with family childcare. The above uses shall be permitted in all districts, A, R1, R2, R3, R1A, R2A, MHRB, RC, RO, REC, HMD, CI, I, B, MY. Delete home occupations as outlined in Section 8 of this ordinance and comply with state licensing rules where applicable, from Note 6, and replace the home-based childcare Section 34. To amend Section 25, definitions with the following. Delete 19.25.t, childcare, home, and definition and replace with childcare, family. In occupied residence in which childcare is regularly provided for less than 24 hours per day, except emergencies, for one to six children from one or more unrelated families. The six children shall include any foster children residing in the home and all children who are related to the caregiver, except children who are 10 years of age or older. Daytime care for up to six preschool-aged children at any one time in the home of the provider plus, on an after-school basis, up to three school-aged children who attend a full-day program outside of the daycare home. The numbers of children set forth here include the provider's own biological, adopted, step or foster children, if those children are less than 10 years of age. Delete 19.25.u, childcare, home, group, and definition and replace it with childcare, group, family. In occupied residence in which childcare is regularly provided for less than 24 hours per day, except emergencies... hours per day except emergencies for seven to twelve children from one or more unrelated families. The twelve children shall include all children related to the caregiver and any foster children residing in the home except children who are ten years of age or older. In addition to the twelve children, up to five children enrolled in a full-day school program may also be cared for up to five hours per day on school days and all day during school holidays. Add new definition and renumber as needed. Nineteen point twenty-five point Z. Daycare facility. A state-licensed facility providing day or evening time care for seven or more preschool-aged children at any one time with more than one provider or a facility that is not located in the home of the provider, also known as childcare center, preschool or nursery school. Revise Section eight home occupations to remove the following language from nineteen point eight point F point three. Hours of operation except in the case of a childcare home.
Ordinance number two dash twenty-six will remain at first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting, at which time we shall have a public hearing. And I feel as though I want to applaud the clerk for reading that because that was Goman's work, so thank you. Brings us to resolutions under new business. First item is Resolution seven dash twenty-six. For the City Clerk.
Resolution seven dash twenty-six. Naming Dahlia Court as a private road. August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that the following road be named and addresses assigned if required. Name Dahlia Court. Explanations. One, name suggested by the developer of the one thirty-six Route one oh eight condominium development. Two, the E nine-one-one committee recommended and approved the name at their July second, two thousand twenty-five committee meeting. Three, the name is required to be in compliance with E nine-one-one standards. State E nine-one-one officials concurred that the purpose or that the proposed street name is in compliance with the E nine-one-one standards. Four, Dahlia Court will be a private road. Five, the owner is required to install a street sign and a private way sign per city condition of name acceptance. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that this action is in accordance with RSA two thirty-one semicolon one thirty-three. RSA two thirty-one semicolon one thirty-three dash A. RSA one oh six dash H. State of New Hampshire Department of Safety, Division of Emergency Communications addressing standards and Chapter nineteen, Section twenty-three, City of Somersworth ordinances.
Counselor Peppin.
Yeah, may I? I'd like to have suspended rules have a second reading on this thing where we're only at one meeting per month.
Fair enough. Counselor Peppin moves for the suspension of council rules to have a second reading on Resolution seven dash twenty-six this evening, seconded by Counselor Goodwin. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of suspension of council rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Council rules are suspended. City Clerk, if you'd read by title only.
Resolution seven twenty-six. Naming Dahlia Court as a private road.
Resolution seven dash twenty-six, having been read a first and second time, is now before you for any amendment. Seeing no amendment, the Chair will entertain a motion on the resolution. Counselor Peppin.
Move on to adoption.
Counselor Peppin moves for the adoption of Resolution seven dash twenty-six, seconded by Counselor Vincent. Any discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Counselor Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson? Sorry. Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Mishu?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
And Barry?
Yes.
Resolution seven dash twenty-six is adopted. That brings us to Resolution eight dash twenty-six for a first reading. City Clerk.
Resolution eight dash twenty-six. To authorize the City Manager to contract with Allegiant Fire and Rescue of Walpole, Massachusetts for the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer one hundred-foot rear-mount platform aerial apparatus for the fire department. August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the City of Somersworth Capital Improvement Program recommends replacing the fire department's aerial ladder truck with an aerial platform truck in fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven. And whereas, city staff recommends contracting with Allegiant Fire and Rescue for the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer one hundred-foot rear-mount platform aerial apparatus for an amount not to exceed two million three hundred and one thousand five dollars. And whereas, the Public Safety Committee reviewed this recommendation with city staff as proposed on July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and voted to recommend this purchase to the Finance Committee. And whereas, the Finance Committee reviewed this recommendation with city staff on August fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and voted to recommend this purchase to the full City Council. And whereas, the City Council is authorizing the signature of the contract with the funding of the purchase to be authorized at a future date. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that the City Manager is authorized to contract with Allegiant Fire and Rescue for the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer one hundred-foot rear-mount platform aerial apparatus for the fire department for an amount not to exceed two million three hundred and one thousand five dollars and to take any and all other such actions relative to this contract determined to be in the best interest of the city. Sponsored by Counselors Martin Peppin, David A. Witham, Kenneth Vincent, Laura Barry, Richard Mishu, and approved by the City Attorney.
Resolution eight dash twenty- Excuse me. Resolution eight dash twenty-six will remain at first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Brings us to Resolution nine dash twenty-six. City Clerk, if you'd read the resolution. Thank you.
Resolution nine twenty-six. To authorize the City Manager to contract with FireTech and Safety of New England of Winthrop, Maine for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department. August eleventh of two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the City of Somersworth Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six contains a recommendation to replace fifteen self-contained breathing apparatus and fit test equipment used by the fire department over a three-year period. And whereas, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six adopted budget contains an appropriation for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus and fit test equipment representing the second year of this program. And whereas, FireTech and Safety of New England is a certified vendor for self-contained breathing apparatus and fit test equipment on the Massachusetts State Bid List. And whereas, city staff recommends the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus and fit test equipment from FireTech and Safety of New England at a cost not to exceed one hundred one thousand four hundred eighteen dollars. And whereas, the Public Safety Committee reviewed this recommendation with city staff on July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and recommends the city purchase as proposed. And whereas, the Finance Committee reviewed this recommendation with city staff on August fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and recommends the city purchase the equipment from FireTech and Safety of New England for an amount not to exceed one hundred and one thousand four hundred eighteen dollars. And now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth, the City Manager is authorized to purchase SCBA and fit test equipment from FireTech and Safety of New England of Winthrop, Maine for the fire department at an amount not to exceed one hundred one thousand four hundred eighteen dollars and take any and all other actions relative to this purchase determined to be in the best interest of the city. Sponsored by Counselors Martin Peppin, David A. Witham, Kenneth Vincent, Laura Barry, Richard Mishu, and approved by the City Attorney.
Counselor Peppin, you're recognized.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion and have a second reading on Resolution nine twenty-six.
Counselor Peppin moves that council rules be suspended for a second reading on Resolution nine twenty-six this evening, seconded by Counselor Barry. Discussion. If you're in favor of suspension of council rules, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Council rules are hereby suspended. Refer back to the City Clerk for a second reading of the resolution by title only.
Resolution nine twenty-six. To authorize the City Manager to contract with FireTech and Safety of New England of Winthrop, Maine for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department.
Resolution nine twenty-six, having been read a first and second time, is now before you for any amendment. No amendment being offered. The Chair will entertain a motion on the resolution. Counselor Peppin.
Move for its adoption.
Counselor Peppin moves for the adoption of Resolution nine twenty-six, seconded by Counselor Barry. Discussion. Counselor Barry.
I just think I agree that we should get this going. It's safety, it's for people to be able to breathe correctly, and this was something we were planning for anyway.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Counselor Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Mishu?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Resolution nine dash twenty-six is adopted. Brings us to Resolution ten dash twenty-six, and the Chair will place forward a motion to suspend council rules to read by title only. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Vincent. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of suspension of council rules to read Resolution ten dash twenty-six by title only, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Have a first reading of Resolution ten dash twenty-six by title only. City Clerk, you're welcome.
Resolution ten twenty-six. To authorize the City Manager to contract with Wright Pierce Engineers of Portsmouth, New Hampshire for final engineering design services for the Somersworth Water Treatment Facility improvements.
Resolution ten dash twenty-six will remain at first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Brings us to agenda item number seventeen, which is comments by visitors. Are there any comments by visitors this evening? Yes, sir, please come forward. And I'm not sure if that mic got turned off or not, but you might need to turn it back on if there's no little green light.
Light is on, can you hear me?
You're good.
Okay. I am Art Rosberg Yoder, and I'd like to begin by thanking you for your appointment to the Conservation Commission. I've been waiting basically to get started on this, and I'm looking forward to being of some help, particularly with that new parcel, conservation parcel up the north end of Lily Pond. And one of the, I just, there's a couple of things I want to mention here, and they kind of tie into that. One of the issues that I know we're looking into on that development of a conservation plan for that parcel is in fact that there is a question of access to that parcel because it's at the end basically of two private roads, one of which is adjacent to where I live. I actually live on a private road, it's only two residents, it's actually a driveway, but it's technically a private road. But, so we're looking into that, and that in fact brings up the other issue having something to do with private roads. Because I live between Cole's Pond Road, which is one of those that we're looking at, and Blue Heron Drive. We're among those people who use the blue bags, and of course, we have to bring them out to the end of the private road on a Lily Pond Road where it's collected. Along with the preparation to work on this task that I'm going to work with the conservation, I obtained from the city a list of the private roads. Thank you, Amber Hall. And it turns out there's ninety-five of them, and as of the council action tonight, ninety-six of them. Some of them, I'm sure, are very short and don't involve any significant effort on the part of those residents to bring bags out to where their collection point is, but some of them are quite long, and some of them have terrain issues. In my case, over the next few years, as we prepare for the new cart system, I'm going to have to figure out a way to bring those carts up a slope, sloping driveway, a total of about an eighty-foot rise to get it up to where the blue bags are. They're not going to fit in my van, which I normally use for the blue bags, so I'm going to have to come up with a creative new solution, like perhaps putting a box of some sort or a little shed of some sort at the top of the driveway to enclose the bins and just bringing trash up to the bins over the collection period. I'm not sure what the solution's going to be, but I predict that with people on private roads over the next couple of years, that question's going to come up. It may have already come up in your discussions, but there are going to be people who are going to have fairly significant difficulties with the cart system, and you say have time between now and then to address that and come up with some creative solutions, but that's one of the things you're going to have to solve. And then finally, the third point I wanted to mention has to do with housing. I don't have a solution for the housing problem either, but over the years that I've been on this earth, I've lived in a bunch of different cities, some of them very large, and I personally lived in housing facilities, low-income housing, housing projects, which sometimes they're called. They have their own problems, but I believe that the housing challenges that we're facing these days are raising for smaller communities than ever before. The specter of having to consider some truly creative solutions, among those might be for Somersworth to entertain at least the possibility of some type of municipal housing project. If you will, the city might look at itself eventually as possibly the developer of last resort for the purpose of affordable housing. That has its own problems, that there's a lot of issues, there's crime issues, there's enforcement issues, but I just want to encourage the council to be very creative as you look at this and at least entertain the possibility that this may be one of the solutions you can look at and consider as worth looking at. And that's it, thank you very much.
Appreciate the comments. Any further closing comments by visitors this evening? Yes, please.
Richard Brooks, Ward one, eighteen Linden Street. Still there, haven't moved yet. Hope to stay there for a long time, actually, I do enjoy this area. So, the trash pickup, the blue bags, I know we're only looking maybe two years of them. I think our contract with Waste Management's about seven years, which I think also coincides with the bulk of the time that landfill is going to possibly close. Where's our trash going then? How are we getting it to the next landfill, and how far away is that? This is something else we really need to start thinking about for this city because to simply load up the residential trash trucks and truck them a much longer distance is going to significantly raise costs. It might be time to start considering a transfer station here, and then we could have smaller businesses, maybe not Waste Management, maybe local business, we all want a local business. Maybe they could do trash pickup for some of these people that have the long driveways, private roads, and actually take them to the transfer station to be transported by tractor-trailer, a much more efficient way to truck large amounts of trash hours away like it's probably going to be at that point. So, we have a lot to think about in these next years coming up that is going to impact this city in huge ways. Thank you.
Appreciate the comment. Any further closing comments by visitors? Thank you. Seeing none, closing comments by council members, and let's start, let's start at Ward five, Counselor Mishu.
Thank you, Honored. I just want to congratulate Jenny Holmes and the Policeman Association and everybody else that was involved with this today's car show, the Hilltop Classic Car Show. Huge turnout, it was the largest one they had so far. They had over a hundred and twenty vehicles that showed up, so thank you for doing a good job there. I also want to thank the Somersworth Police Department for assisting me. Yesterday, I had a little health issue while I was at the car show. They were there within seconds, and they checked on me to make sure I was doing fine, so I can't thank them enough for being there for me. And I'd like to congratulate the, once again, the Police Association, the members of the Police Department for the national night out. Huge success, once again, in this year. Sadly, that I saw relocated out of Ward five, the Jules Vison, but I can understand why because, once again, this year, they have grown even larger, so they needed a larger venue spot for them, so they picked a good spot out by the high school and the football field, well attended, so, once again, I'd like to thank the Police Association and also all the members of other departments, Public Works, Fire Department, everybody else that had assisted them putting that on. And one more I'd like to thank, or actually congratulate, Father Andrew Nelson of St. Ignatius Parish. Once again, he had a successful parish picnic a couple of weeks ago. That was a huge event. I'm not sure how many turned out this year, but last year there was estimated around fifteen hundred people, and I dare to say they matched that, if not enlarged the amount of people that showed up. It's one of the events that the parish actually puts on that if you hear about it, you're automatically invited. You don't have to be Catholic, you don't have to be any faith.
Thank you, Counselor Mishu. Counselor Parity Catanzaro.
Oh, we're going in this direction, that's fun.
Oh, I'm keeping it.
Keeping it interesting. I wanted to thank Art for your great comments. It's always wonderful to see the people that we vote on. Clearly, we have put the right person on the Conservation Commission, and thank you for raising the other issues of creative problem solving that we have coming up. I wanted to flag a couple of things for the Traffic Safety Committee, I believe that's the committee for these, but two issues that I have run into. One is the end of Mount Auburn, that is on the Main Street side, is a very tricky visibility corner to pull out of. I don't know if it could be as simple as adding one of those mirrors there or something, but there's Main Street, there's often people coming right up over that hill, and you just can't see, maybe it's a speeding issue, maybe it's a, maybe it's a visibility issue, I'm not sure, but if that could be looked at at the next Traffic Safety Committee meeting, that would be great. And another is related to our constitutional way, wonderful street improvements there. It just brings to mind, again, how that stop sign at the end of Constitutional, and then also at the end of Green Street. Washington Street doesn't have stop signs, as most people who are familiar with the area know, but a lot of people that go through that that aren't familiar sometimes pull out because they think it's a four-way stop. It looks like it should be a four-way stop. It's just one of those odd spots, so I don't know if that could be looked at as, I think, actually, the Washington traffic, if I'm not mistaken, is less than the traffic going in the direction that has the stop sign, so just flagging those two things. We did also just get a public notice for the municipal offices, the filing period, which is September 10th through September 25th. So just want to flag that for folks, we are meeting one more time before then, I'm sure we'll be reminding people, but City Council, School Board, and all of the election official positions, and Mayor are all up this November, and so anyone interested in filing can file between September 10th and September 25th. We always welcome people getting involved. It is very exciting to see the crosswalk almost here, this crosswalk that we have been excited about. A lot of folks talked to me about it before I even ran the first time, and that is the crosswalk connecting Constitutional to the Highland side of High Street here in our downtown district, so that's on the, the pawn shop folded strip connecting with the Poppy Seed side of the, of the intersection there. A lot of times, people had to walk three crosswalks. We're getting that crosswalk in the most useful place, and that will be very exciting, and I think it's really important that we have those beacons for visibility, as that will be a new update for that road, so that the traffic automobiles will be able to see people crossing. And then finally, I probably should have done this at the special reports time, but I just wanted to share a brief update from the School Board meeting. I was getting some updates from one of my colleagues on the School Board, as I missed the last meeting, but the, the two major items, I was there for the previous meeting, which had a little bit longer of a discussion. So the School Board, number one, you may have seen in the paper, has voted, Summersworth School District has voted to join the lawsuit that the ACLU is bringing, related to diversity, equity, and inclusion requirements, mostly around the vagueness of those requirements by, by various laws. And that is something that the ACLU is not charging the school district. I know the, there's a few other school districts, I think Oyster River and Dover, if people might know.
Yeah.
I think it's Oyster River and Dover that have also joined that lawsuit. And then the, the funding left over at the end of the year from the School Board's budget from the previous year, as they do many times, they have put in a request that I think may come to us at the next meeting, to encumber those funds for some planned, essentially capital improvement, but for technology improvement that was in this past budget that we all discussed for fiscal year '26. So it'll be a creative way that they can try to cover those and, and save that from going into the fiscal year '27 budget. So those are just two major items I wanted to flag from the School Board meeting, since I am the counselor up to the School Board. And finally, I'm just, I'm very excited about the wastewater treatment facility upgrades. I know it's kind of a nerdy thing to be excited about, but Counselor Goodwin and I got a refresh tour of the wastewater treatment facility, the water treatment plant, all of those things, and it's, it's really, you know, I, I encourage you to stop by if you're a resident, we really have the highest level of professionals doing this, and we're, we're really replacing things as we need to replace them, to make sure that we are ready for the next wave of residents, as we build more housing here in the city, and that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. It seems like, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we've once again forgot about the Plaza. Is anything being done about the Plaza? I'm going to mention it every single time we come here to this meeting. I want something done with the Plaza. We talked about it in depth several months back, maybe a month ago. Let's clean the Plaza up a little bit, and fill the holes, and do what we need to do as a city to make that eyesore look better. It's been brought to my attention by one of my constituents that, and outside on, they must think I'm just that large, which I don't mind, because even though we have wards, we're still part of the whole city. It's Millennial Field, the entrance, it's very narrow, when they have a functions there, they have issues coming in and out. And I would have brought this up on a miscellaneous, Your Honor, for the Public Works, however, it got canceled, and then it went into where I actually took a vacation, so I apologize for that. They'd like to try to see it opened up a little better, because visibility and getting in and out is tough. I remember when I was on the Fire Department, we actually had a kid hit there, a four or five-year-old kid was hit by a car there. He weathered well in that situation, however, there's been others that probably don't want to. And one more thing is Public Works. I know it's on capital improvement, or whatever list we have it on, to fix the area where the dumpsters are. You currently, and the road, I think that, because we allowed the wonderful gas company to come in and tear our roads up and do a terrible job, I'm sorry. It's how I feel, because it is the way it is. Perfectly good road, and I understand we have to have gas at places, you know, I'm trying to be open for it, but it just destroys our roads. I know that probably, the road by the police problem right there is probably going to be redone also with Public Works, but let's get it going, if we can, because you drive off the pavement, it's getting worse, it's cracked, it's destroyed, it's like, maybe we can come up with a method on maybe putting the dumpsters on a concrete pad, and making an area where people can drive up. A poor woman got out of a car the other day, here I am laughing, it's not funny, and she had a tough time maneuvering to the dumpsters, because it's uneven surface, you know, and that's my story, and that's, I'm sticking to it.
Thank you for your story, Counselor. Counselor Peppin?
Thank you, ma'am. I'd just like to comment on, on the ladder truck, on the purchase of, of the aerial apparatus. It's in our CIP for the year 2027. Takes three years to build a piece of apparatus, not so much to build it, there's a waiting list to get them, get them done. NFPA requires that we change apparatus every 20 years, there's, there's reasons behind that. One of them is technology changes, firefighting changes, the equipment changes on, on all the apparatus. The fire trucks that I drove when I first got on the department are half the size of what they are right now. I don't know how you could refit an old chassis that is 20 years old, and invest putting a new ladder on, on top of it. For one thing, if you did do that, I don't know if the apparatus that you're putting on, it's probably going to be a lot more heavier, they're talking about a boom truck, or a platform truck instead of a ladder truck, weight differential's completely different. The reason why we have this committee formed is to see what is best for the city. They've gone from a ladder truck to a platform truck is what they want to go to. There's numerous reasons why it is, it's a lot safer, you can rescue more people out of, out of a window than just one person at a time. There's all kinds of reasons. Technology changes. I don't know if the apparatus that we have right now, even though it's a beautiful truck, it's been out of service for, what, a month now, almost two months? Things break down. I just don't know if there is a manufacturer that even want to look at it. We talked about, before we built the fire station, that we had architects look at the end, and wanted, we wanted to put an addition on instead of putting a new building on, and they wouldn't touch the building, they didn't want to put any type of an addition onto it, simply because of it being blocked on and all the other reasons that they came up with. There's all kinds of reasons, the brake systems can't be whatever. I just hope that this council and the citizens realize that the best option to do is to purchase a whole new truck right straight through. I mean, I've been on the Fire Department, and been on apparatus that, if you climb the, come up on some of the hills that we have here, you can get out and walk fast in a truck was going up the hill, because you end up over, the weight that you have just overpowers the engine. The brake system's totally different, too, I mean, you don't know, you put more tonnage on, the brake systems have to be changed, there is just so much to it. I don't even know if it's even feasible, so I, I just hope that if you go, you go with a reliable dealer, and I guess that's all I'm going to say about it. And thanks to Police Department for the night out, your work was outstanding, and all the, all the fire, police officers did a great job there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll go to the far end of the table here, Counselor Barry.
I'll just make some of this brief, because it's already been said, I just want to say the police, the fire, and the Public Works for doing a great job with National Night Out, as well as the car show for the Police Association. Both were awesome, I had a great fun at both of those. Car show got a little hot, I will not lie, but it was still great. Again, I just want to say, it was mentioned earlier, but Feast Around the World is on the 16th and 17th, which is this coming weekend, and then last but not least, and I'm just going to put a bug in the air, because it is a little ways away, but the Summersworth Historical Museum is putting on a cemetery tour. Exactly. It hasn't happened in a little while, so be prepared for September 27th. So, I will leave it at that.
Thank you. Counselor Cameron?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to say that the new location for the National Night Out was wonderful, the layout, I think it's a perfect spot to have it. If you haven't been down to the Little League Field and checked out the mural, go down and check it out, it's wonderful, I've gotten a lot of response back for it, from it, and people love it, and I'm actually working on something else, but details to come later down the road. And I'd like to thank the Fire Department and the Police Department for the quick response to my friend and Counselor Rick, as I was there yesterday as well, and it was 110 cars, Rick, not 120, so now I know you hit your head. And this Saturday is Don't Trash Summersworth, we're going to meet at Lilac Lane, which is where the Police Department is, and we're going to be doing Blackwater Road. So Kenny, if you'd like to join us, we'll be over on your side of town.
We'll be on the list.
Okay. Two to three. Thank you.
Counselor Goodwin?
Thank you. Just two, two quick thoughts. Regarding the public comment of the, the City of Summersworth becoming the developer of last resort, there is already an entity that is, that serves that purpose, Summersworth Housing Authority, it is not a government, it's not a, you know, City of Summersworth Department, but it is a, you know, quasi-governmental body that, that their role is to create affordable housing, and they have some pretty broad authority, authority to do that. Their mission is to do that within the City of Summersworth, and I have said numerous times that I think we can do a better job of working with them and aiding them in their mission. I think we have some collective trauma around the Summersworth Housing Authority, given the general stigma in America around public housing, but specifically around the housing authority's role in the renewal here, I think we need to have a healing process around that, and, you know, work with them to leverage their expertise and resources to build more affordable housing in the community where it's appropriate to do so. I'd also just note that the idea that a new traffic signal's coming to High Street makes me dry heave, I just like, it's, like, I, I can't fathom. And I would have to see some really compelling traffic safety information about why that would be justified. You know, it's, it's kind of a shame, because I think for a long time, it's a bit of a tragedy of the commons, every developer that came along asked for a traffic light, got one, and now we have 12, I think, to get to downtown, so you stop, you know, they're signaledized, it's better than it was, but you stop numerous times, you know, it takes 10, 15 minutes sometimes to get to Route 16. It is the wrong thing for our downtown and the majority of our residents that live in and around the downtown to get, to keep them further and further away from the regionals' economic hub, which is, you know, Dover and Portsmouth, and things oriented realistically south along Route 16. So I think it's the wrong, wrong decision for the majority of our community to make that trip even longer, and so while the applicant might be willing to put it at their expense, I would say at the expense of how many people's time, and the, you know, again, it's just the marginal time cost of getting from the highway to the downtown, every, every minute you make it longer, it's one or two more people that aren't going to come, so. But, I yield.
I counted in my head, seven, but this would make eight, so, close to 12, so. Couple of comments here with regard to, Counselor Vincent, you spoke about Unitil, the gas company, and the condition of their pavement patches. I'll speak to a broader issue, and I'd ask the, the manager to maybe flag it for an agenda item for a future Public Works meeting, is just that of utilities doing work in our city, whether that's EverSource with their utility pole placement, replacement program. If, if you're not aware, just drive the Green Street corridor, there's like a million telephone poles now, and it drives me up a tree. And I don't think, maybe they have a plan, but I don't think it's a very good one to come to conclusion on this project. Unitil, we could complain about their patchwork. I would note that as part of our constitutional way, complete streets, one of the first items of business was to replace the gas line there, and they ran it all the way across Washington Street, and we talk about that intersection, and they terminated on the corner of Washington and Green, what I'll call the, the southeast corner of that intersection. They tore up the granite curbing, it is stacked in high grass near what used to be the laundromat there, and that pedestrian tip-down was never repaired. It's been that way for well over a year now. We've done constitutional way, that, that project is completed, but yet Unitil has this unfinished bit of work on that corner where they tied into the gas line. It's frustrating, they're, they're bigger and more powerful than us perhaps, but it doesn't mean we should lie down and cower to them. And I think the same is true of EverSource, so I, I think an agenda item in our next Public Works, an environment meeting for updates from both of those utilities, if they want to send representatives, I'd welcome that, and if you recall, I penned a draft letter to go to the Public Utilities Commission last year. I still have that draft communication, and I'd be glad to resurrect that and send it to the PUC, carbon copy the governor, the Attorney General, heck, I'll send one to President Trump, maybe he'll get involved, right? Because it's just frustrating beyond end. Mayor asked me to bring forward, the street tree in front of Poppy Seed Studios is dead, has been dead for quite some time, and what a replacement plan is for said tree. I'm not a tree expert, I don't know if you plant trees in the summertime or not, but I'd agree, it probably should be addressed. Someone mentioned traffic safety, another agenda item to look at there, and I don't think this needs to go- even think this needs to go to traffic safety, this is perhaps just city staff. With continued building in the Green Street corridor, more on-street parking demands. If you turn the corner onto Franklin Street, between green and silver, I'm pretty sure there's not enough space to have adequate distance from the intersections to have any parking there. That whole corridor of Franklin Street needs no parking signage appropriately placed between Franklin, Silver, and that area. It's a heavily used area by coast bus, it's a tight intersection, there are cars parked there illegally all the time. Perhaps we could make sure Parking Enforcement takes a spin-through there with some regularity. That would be great. National Night Out was a great event, thanks to all that made that happen, and I'll conclude my remarks with just a commentary on the aerial apparatus. I certainly support us moving forward with the purchase of a new aerial platform truck. As Counselor Pepin alluded to, there are a number of benefits to a platform over a standard aerial, not the least of which is ease of operation, can be done by one person versus multiple people, heavier loads and all of that, and we don't need to get into all that detail, but it's a far superior piece of equipment. It does come at a higher price point by some margin compared to just a traditional aerial. Counselor Pepin mentioned that these devices get to the end of a useful life. Some of it is, is less about the engine. I agree with some of the public comment that the engines of old are far better than some of the engines of now, but when it comes to the actual aerial appliance itself, they're steel, they can rust, they need to pass annual inspections. With every passing year, that likelihood of passing that inspection decreases, which is why you get into this cycle. Fire apparatus industry is a quirky industry. I would say prior to COVID, there were many, many, many fire apparatus manufacturers in this country. Not all of them were large, some of them were small mom-and-pop type shops that produced small numbers of apparatus a year. That number is even smaller when you talk about aerial apparatus. A lot of these companies have been purchased by a large conglomerate, call it the Rev Group, and they own many of these now. COVID came along, there were a lot of stimulus dollars that were infused into the government sector. Many municipalities chose to leverage those stimulus dollars to purchase fire apparatus because of the high price point. So what you had was this sort of perfect storm of a shrinking number of manufacturers for a fire apparatus manufacturer, dramatic increase in demand because everybody was ordering fire trucks, which has led to this lag time of three, four years for fire apparatus and much higher price points. Add to that tariffs and things of that nature. Fire trucks are almost all steel and aluminum, a combination thereof. It's like, not the best world to be in right now. So, just complicated. So it's expensive stuff, but it's critically important, and, you know, people say, oh, you're buying it for the Fire Department. Well, they're the ones who use it, and it does improve firefighter safety, and I applaud that, but we're buying it for our community, for the citizens of our community. You know, it's like an insurance policy. We all buy our homeowner's insurance, at least I hope so, right? If you're like me, you buy more than you need. I'm like an insurance poor guy because I'm a risk manager, right? That's what I do. We spend lots of money on insurance, but you hope you never need to use it, right? And that's true of fire apparatus as well, right? It's there for the protection of our community. We've spent quite a bit of time here tonight talking about residential growth and apartment buildings and all of that. We are 10 square miles. Somersworth is not growing out, it's growing up, right? Which just heightens the need for equipment like we're talking about here. So I think there's a strong case to be made for what we're seeking to achieve. I don't like the price more than anybody else. I know the manager and our finance director will get us a number so that we can thoughtfully consider how we move forward with this, but I am hopeful that this council sees its way and moves forward with this purchase. Because, again, if we order it now, we're not getting it until 2028. It's just a fascinating time with regard to fire apparatus. So that'll conclude my remarks for the evening. If you have any agenda items, you can certainly see the city clerk with regard to those or connect with the city manager. We don't have any non-public session this evening. Counselor Barry moves that the City Council stand in adjournment. That is seconded by Counselor Cameron. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all. And if there is an over and under that I would have this meeting done quicker than the mayor, I've lost that tonight, so.